All right, can you hear me?
His audio is connecting thirty seconds. Out of your head.
All right.
Okay, so we also have Scott Rakes and Derek Olenger. Okay. Comments? No citizens comments? Okay, adopt agenda. Any changes that we need to know about? Okay, so we need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Adopt the agenda.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion adopt the agenda and second it. Scott without Mary and do we have to do?
We do have to roll calls, yeah.
Every time, okay, okay. So we've had a motion and a second to adopt the agenda, so we will vote. Lee?
I.
Kim?
I.
I, Doug?
I.
You've got a three oval.
Motion is passed. Consent agenda. Anything to point out there? Okay, again, we need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, off of that one. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Voting, Lee?
I.
Kim?
I.
Molly?
I.
Accept the consent agenda. Presentation, public hearings, recognitions, and proclamations. So we have a school bus driver appreciation day of proclamation, which I read, okay. Whereas daylight on dirt and multi-lane highways from the warm spring to the frigid winter, Minnesota school bus driver safety, transport safely transport more than six hundred and eighty-two thousand share students to and from school and activities each day. And whereas Minnesota school bus drivers play a crucial role in our school systems and are important figures in children's lives, often bookending a student's day at school as a positive influence on their educational experience. And whereas nearly every school district in the state faces a bus driver shortage and is seeking dedicated professional to serve in filling flexible jobs. And whereas the bus driving industry is the largest form of mass transit in Minnesota and has worked hard to reduce its environmental impact by using all fuels and retrofit diesel engines. Whereas students are nearly unsafe riding to and from school in a bus than in cars thanks to rigorous safety standards for vehicles and drivers as well as student training efforts. And whereas the state of Minnesota appreciates school bus drivers and recognizes the invaluable contributions they make to public education and student safety. Today, we recognize these worthy professionals. Now, therefore, the city of Kenyon does hereby proclaim Wednesday, February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three as School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. Okay, we're gonna move on to engineering.
Great, thanks Molly. So first thing, just a quick update on the Pearl Creek sanitary sewer project. We're about seventy-five percent complete with the plans. We are on hold for a little bit until we get our soil borings, which is scheduled for next week. I'm waiting on some other bits of information here. There's an update or there's a little note in the letter that I had in the packet that you may notice as we bring final plans forward that the forced main route that we were previously proposing has changed. Once we are kind of got started with the design process, we were talking with Wayne and discovered some capacity issues with the line that we were going to connect to. So we had to shift the forced main route to another street. And that'll be the plan here moving forward. So if you are wondering why that looks different, that's what's going on with it.
Like any different?
Costs are gonna be about the same. In fact, you could make an argument that it's actually gonna be less, but we do need to get a few more easements.
That's what I was wondering, where it's gonna potentially affect more.
Yeah, two more easements is what we're looking at right now and impacted both those property owners and we're starting to work with them. Which leads me into that, the next thing here. As of later last week, I have spoken with each of the property owners that will need easements from. Discussions are going good here so far, so over this next month, we'll start pulling together our, you know, legal descriptions and work with Scott on the easements agreements that we'll need eventually as well, so. That's all for that project.
Derek.
Next, update on the twenty-twenty-three street improvements. So this is the overlay project that's planned for this year. We have actually started the design week. What's on the agenda here tonight is a process that we need to go through that's related to funding the project. So if you might remember when we did the the last large street project, we had a section to go through and there's public hearings and notices that go out for that. With this project, we're using a different type of bond. It's a street reconstruction bond. In order to go through that process, we need to prepare something that's called a street reconstruction plan, which is essentially a list of the projects that you plan on completing over the next five years. So what's included in the packet is a draft of that, of that report. It's essentially what we've been discussing with the infrastructure management plan over the last several months, or several years rather, at this point. So in terms of action items for tonight, we have this draft reconstruction plan. At the next meeting, we're hoping to approve that plan. You can approve that plan after a public hearing. So the resolution that's in front of you basically sets a date for the public next regularly.
Before we do a motion, anybody have any questions on? Okay, then we will need to approve the resolution twenty-twenty-three for the street reconstruction plan, but it's just for the public.
Setting a date for the public.
Setting a date for the public.
Twenty-three oh four to get the
All second.
Okay, so we've had a motion and a second to adopt resolution number twenty-three zero four. Now we are voting, Lee?
I.
Kim? Molly?
I.
I don't wanna ignore him, but.
Am I getting out to you guys or not? Hello?
Okay, okay, motion is passed. Okay, legal.
Thank you, just a quick update on the one lane for Avenue, and I know the chief can add if he needs to add anything here. I wasn't sure if David Jacobson was coming or I'd have him at as well, but citation was issued last month on the tenth, tenth of January. Arrangement, which is the first appearance, is on the twenty-third of this month, so coming up in a week and a half or so. And Mark and I have talked about, do we start looking at the civil side of this as well since it's moving slowly? The answer, I think, is wait till the arraignment occurs, wait till that process goes through. I don't know if there's any other updates, chief, you have regarding that, but I did not do any other action till that, that first criminal prosecution matter. It is moved.
The only update I have. He had we had done. Also my resident mistake. Registered or not, per the DNR website, they need to be registered. Stored. I don't think any registration. Stored. Related information.
And the whole idea is that the criminal prosecution effort gets some action, and I would not do anything further till that passes and we can start that process. And David can update us as we need to be updated and the chief can as well. And if it doesn't move forward, then we can take the other steps that we've talked about before. Nothing beyond that for a night.
Okay. All right. All business. Continue discussion on future of Depot Park.
So the city received a, has received an estimate to rehab the building. Most of it. We don't have a estimate for electrical. Basically, we're figuring somewhere between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars and get that building in a better shape. So the estimate, I'll bring up here. Is it in your packet from on down? Basically, we, they looked at flooring, they looked at the kitchen. Replacing the front and back doors. You know, in the kitchen, just a basic countertop and cabinets, maybe open shelving, we think would be better. Than doing O S B to the interior floor and probably over it. So the electrical, you know, might be three thousand, two thousand. I mean, it's all open. It's pretty easy to, it would be pretty easy for contractor to, you know, upgrade the electrical. So anyway, the park board has talked about this. Talked about this estimate and just the concept of fixing the building up. And I think the preference, you know, as the council has kind of been, I think, looking to is just to fix up existing building. You know, there hasn't been an actual formal vote on either one fixing or, you know, putting a different building in, but basically, I think the consensus, everybody is fixing the building up. Kim, I think that that's how the park board has been for the most part. So the park board at the last meeting just as a kind of a direction is maybe trying to do some fundraising to, we can get some money fundraised to help get this kickstarted. So that's kind of where we left it. So this is more or less just an update now, but I don't know if there's any questions on any of this. Sort of like last fall. It started with discussion of, you know, should we fix the depot building up as a park shelter or we build a new park shelter? And I think after that kind of got out, you know, a couple of things, the park board, I think, felt that it'd be better to fix this building up. And I think what we heard from the community, it's kind of it's kind of the direction this is going. I have that.
Anything else from the park board side?
I was just gonna mention that we are starting the fundraisers already for March eleventh. We're gonna be doing a silent convention with the swimming pool having their taco feed via from five to seven, so. Get the funds, fun start.
All right, so it's a new business. Resolution twenty-two-three dash zero three.
So this is a a reimbursement resolution. It's just a formality. Anytime there's a project, I think actually some cities just adopt this thing every year, but I guess we generally do it the years we have a project, which in the infrastructure management plan is like every other year, we've got a bigger project that has to be kind of bonded for. So this resolution basically just acknowledges that the city is looking at, you know, a larger project. We talk in there about the two projects and the estimated dollar amounts. So we have higher estimates in there than what the projects, you know, we feel what Derek feels they'll come in at, but we have to do that to be safe. Anyway, this resolution passed, it allows us to pay ourselves back for costs that are being incurred now, you know, like the design costs, the surveying, all that kind of stuff that happens. You know, usually the year before, the fall before a project. And so this allows us to include that in the bond financing to pay, kind of pay ourselves back. We have design costs ahead of time. And so it allows us to include that in the financing.
This does need a motion, so we do. So we need a motion, resolution twenty-three dash zero three.
Motion.
I can second it.
I.
Molly? I. Motion passes to adopt resolution twenty-two-three dash zero three, establishing procedures relating to compliance with reimbursement fine regulations under the Internal Revenue Code. Next, Kenyon P D body worn camera policy.
Well, we're at with this right now is that there's a S R T grant that just came out. Out last. Yeah. So gonna end on the seventeenth. That's all the applications. Seventeenth, and then I'm actually S R T stands, stands for small, rural and tribal beauties. And so basically, we're just in a starting phase of this. When we're trying to find extra funding if we need to acquire. So I was approached by our attorneys. Here at the best gets body worn cameras, just help the prosecution cases. I think it's a safe bet, state of Minnesota at some point is gonna make body worn cameras mandatory. And so I'm just trying to get ahead of a lot of questions still need, that need to be answered, but part of the grant was, do we have a policy in place? And they're working on that and talking to the city board, so that's all.
So I got a message that said Doug raised his hand. I don't know if this is a Zoom message or what, but I don't know if he can hear us, or I mean, maybe he can hear us, but we can't hear him.
I can go over some of the costs that we were looking at. Yeah, so, so right now we have watch guard systems and our squad cameras. We have three squad cameras and it's watch guard. So I'm going, I'm moving towards watch guard system as a whole, for body cameras and for squad videos. We can able to use a cloud system and be able to pull into the garage and download our body cameras on all the ones that come. Separate server in there. It can be kind of expensive and maintenance and all that other stuff. Over the five years, it can be spread out over five years. And we're looking at a fire in five body cameras. They have a lot there, so if we are working an event, my two partners, we have cameras as well. Five cameras. Over five years, we're looking at about twenty thousand five hundred. And so initial cost upfront, when I was talking to the vendor, was to give you the eleven thousand upfront. With the grant, you can get up per camera. You need a thousand of that, out of that twenty thousand, I think they're, if we get the grant.
I'm assuming there's some states that already have them administered.
By security.
Oh, that which makes sense, okay.
And the cost of the, the colony still doesn't have one, or kind of going along with them to see that, you know, they have multiple cameras that's gonna purchase it, it's gonna be huge cost for the colony and
And then, so the cameras, now since good for five years, so then like every five years, would you have to update those?
Well, it's a good question. So, um, actually with this, this system, we actually get new ones after, we do this three years. It's a good third, good a name of what they call it, but basically we get new cameras in three years and then now, you know, yeah, they are good for five years. Beyond, but
Yeah.
And chief, chief, so the uploads are automatic, correct? You pull into the garage, so automatically uploads, so they don't have to do anything with it this moment they pull in. Dump it up in the cloud.
So it's, it's gonna say a cost in that, I mean, you know, it takes download off of our flash drives. I bought multiple flash drives, so the guys can just switch them out and then have to set the computer for now watching the download, so. So this will get rid of all that. It's just an automatic dump. It's hours. A lot of traffic stops. And that computer stayed up too, was doing. It's his computer.
So tonight, because we do need a motion on this, but is tonight to accept the policy or what is?
Yeah, to approve or?
I spoke with multiple chiefs about this. I worked with some chiefs that are just went in a system like Cimbo, they're just wanting five cameras recently, so they worked with another chief.
And like, did you, do we, you reviewed this? Okay.
It's fine, yeah.
Making changes that, there's a couple of small things that, yeah.
I'll go ahead and make the motion then to adopt the policy for the P D body worn cameras.
All second.
Okay, and Lee?
I.
Kim?
I.
Molly?
I. Motion passes.
So if the mayor texts me his vote. There's a new question for you.
Yeah. That's a difficult one. The answer is certainly we can acknowledge it, but we'll rely on the three that are here if we can't get a voice vote out of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can he hold up a card down there?
Yeah.
Names?
Maybe that's another way, you know, I
Yeah.
Is there any way you can call in so you can hear? The problem is it has to be recorded so you can hear it. That's the whole issue with the statute, yeah.
Does he have a concern about this one that he wants to talk about?
No.
No?
I just wondered as far as voting, he put yes. When you were doing that.
Can he call your phone and just be on the voice there to?
You know, I'll just call him.
Yeah, that would be the way to at least get his voice into the recording and then it's an official.
Face timing, I'm like.
You don't? So if we have you on audio, then we can record your votes.
Yes, that's what I was hearing.
So, yeah, okay. So we have you on audio now, so everybody can hear you.
Okay, so that's good. Doug, did you have any questions on any of that now that we have you before I move on? Okay, wonderful. All right. Thank you. Next is discuss solid waste hauler agreement.
Okay, so I put this on the agenda because the contract ends, I believe it's June thirtieth. The current agreement, the base agreement was four years ago, five years ago, and then there was a two-year extension. So I wanted to kind of find out from the council. It doesn't have to be voted on even today, we could do it next month, but you know, what the consensus of the council was as far as the hauler. Because one of the options would be to extend their contract. Again, two years, another option would be to, you know, readvertise. Or negotiate with another hauler. I think from our standpoint, we've been happy with long Polly, I think we've had a good relationship working with them. And we haven't had a lot of issues where people call. So, you know, they've done a good job, so I don't have any problems with them. From that standpoint.
I would agree.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Being new to the council with that, I'm questioning, I know a lot of other communities will have the residents do their contracts with their own carriers. Is that something that we've never looked at? So you'd have multiple carriers in the city?
So Kenyon has a, has a solid waste utility. The city formed a solid waste utility twenty years ago or whatever, so the city could literally do its own trash pickup. But instead of that, what we do is we contract with a hauler for residential. Commercial is wide open. There's no, you know, they, people can call whoever they want. They have, they have to be licensed in the city and county. But there are several haulers. But for residential, the city just contracts with one company. And I can't tell you how good that is, you know, working in multiple communities that have different setups with trash pickup. The setup that we have with utility is really good. I think it protects our citizens. I think it gives us control. We don't have as many trucks on our streets. So I can't say, you know, enough good things about that.
Okay.
So that's how that works. So either basically, there's just one hauler. The way it is right now, so.
So tonight. Tonight, tonight, we're not gonna make the decision to stay or extend.
We're gonna stick with them. We won't need, I mean, I'll probably have it on the agenda in March, but basically, if you wanna continue working with them, we'll just come up with, or Scott will come up with an extension.
Right, we revised the contract again, which you've already done previously and extended and come up with any new terms that you direct Mark to put in there. I mean, it's simple consensus of you or all four, you can say, yeah, Mark, go ahead and we'll start doing this. That's all you need tonight. If, if that's what you wanna do. I'll just add, and I agree with Mark, I think having one hauler controlling is a significant aspect for public health, safety, and welfare in this community. You can live in a community, sure, any of the metro cities may have, you know, a Tuesday where there are seven, eight haulers running around with trucks all over. That's one way to do it. Another way is to, you know, put this out to bids again. You haven't had a lot of attraction with that, but you will get some bigger companies occasionally. You've got a more local company here that's done a reasonable job, and that's why it was extended last time by the council as well. So I agree with Mark. I think you've got a lot of staff control. So I, I agree with Mark. I think you've got a lot of staff control over how this utility is handled in the community, and that's a good way to go.
And, and not only that. We never know for sure. And we bring other company. In the week, then we have garbage cans sitting outside on a. When the now one was, uh, brought in. Then it would be winter season, I think, pretty routine now, you know, we don't have. That can setting all over all week long.
And there's even been a couple of times, yeah, with a couple of times with the winter, I mean, with snow this year. That, but they've sent out a message, it's gotten out that we're just, we're gonna move that to Saturday. So I feel like they've done a good job. They're communicating. So I would agree. I think I've not heard any complaints. Everybody else says they feel like they've done a nice job.
Okay, so what I'll do is contact the hauler and talk to them. And make sure they wanna, which I'm sure they do wanna continue, but I'll, I'll talk to them and. And then maybe put it on the March meeting and then that time you can maybe direct. Scott to come up with a amended agreement or whatever and. Have that ready by April and it'll be a couple of months ahead of the game, so.
Yeah, I will add one other thing to keep, keep in mind by designing the agreement or really a license is what's granted to the hauler here. Is not assignable because the city wanted to retain control over that. Um, you had a situation where a, a previous hauler tried to do that and handed off to somebody else, really changed the service the city received. So there are some other protections by having it set up this way that the council has very good control on the staff to deal with this haul. So. It's a, it's a good position for the city to be in.
Okay. We don't need a motion on that. So moving on, discuss Board of Adjustment hearing.
Okay, so I put this on the agenda because. It was not in a place where I thought it was. The Board of Adjustment and the whole deal of, you know, the council being the Board of Adjustment versus the county. Now, from my memo, you probably saw that. The direction that most cities have gone with this, I'm gonna say this first of all. Is to have the county do the Board of Adjustment, what they call open book. Um, they still have it here. The council can still come and usually does. And then people come and bring up their, uh, you know, questions or concerns they have with the valuation of their properties or their homes. And so really, the mechanics of the process doesn't really change much. It just becomes easier. I think as a city, because we don't have to have council people trained. And we've run into this a couple of times in the last ten years where we didn't have somebody that was trained. The problem that happened this year, at least from the county standpoint, was they thought that Dan was still on the council. And Dan's not on the council. So I. You know, she's emailing me back and forth and I realized, oh, she thinks somebody still is trained. So I asked her how many people were trained and she said Dan was. But then I said, well, Dan's not on the council. And then she got, called me and said, yeah, we're gonna have to do, have the county do it this year because we don't have somebody. Trained. So. You know, a council member or more could take the training. It'll be two years out now, though, and we'll tell you before we can get that back by state law. But I think the reality is I don't know how much difference it really makes. You know, when the council does it and the county, you know, they're also up there at the table. And when people come and talk. It gets referred back to the county and then they follow up on it anyway. So to be honest with you, you know, a couple of other cities. At a meeting I was at a few weeks ago have said to me, there's like no difference. And I guess there really isn't that much difference. So I would tell you not even to worry about it, but. It is still there if the council wants to do that or have somebody trained and then be the Board of Adjustment. You know, you can still do that, but. I think most cities now have gone away from that. Yes.
Yeah, Mark. City also itself and also is, you know, I mean, agreed with what you're saying, we would have been. And the main line of it is, it always basically went back to the county. So I see. For my view would be, I mean, just let it come to take it. I think there's only two. Two cities in way, who do you count in there still? We can still be the, make opinions about them.
Right.
So, uh, I think it would be okay in the next three years, we're finding out what is it to, except mom to get.
Yeah. So there's no, no action needs to be taken on this. It's just for information.
Okay. All right. Jacobson Law Office, request for increase to fees for criminal prosecution contract.
So, um. Jeff and I talked to, um, Jacobson's office. In December. Was it when AJ called or January? I think it was January. After the first of the year. So we, we asked them to get us a letter or an email and we put it on in February because it was like two days before the January council meeting. Their caseload has gone up quite a bit exponentially, might be a better word. And they're asking for a hundred dollar a month increase, which I think is, you know, reasonable based on the caseload and. They've done, I think, a good job. I don't know.
The, the other part of this, when I was talking to AJ about this, or actually AJ about this, um, was, you know, a while ago, there was COVID, so they weren't having to go to the right room. It was, you're able to do a lot of escape from now, but now it's back, you know, period persons and the time they call it driving to and from. So it's. Lot more involved in this city is asking.
It's a hundred dollars per month increase, is what they're asking. And we will need a motion. So unless somebody wants any questions, we will need a motion on that one.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Request the increase to the fees. We will vote. Lee.
I.
Kim.
I.
Molly, I. Doug? All in favor? Passes. Okay, other business. We've got KMU coming up next week. Uh, next city council is Tuesday, March fourteenth, and the Board of Appeal and Equalization. Is the twentieth. Yep, okay. Uh, council and staff comments, Lee.
Done. I'm good.
Good. For me, done. Okay. I'll go to Scott.
I have nothing.
Eric?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Mark? Anything out there? Nothing?
Hi, um, I recently moved to Kenyon, so I just have a couple of questions about some things that I've been researching, if it's all right.
Okay.
So one's what I had overheard about the garbage hauler. Um, I moved to Kenyon from like, Lakeville, Rosemont kind of area. And I haven't noticed that when the seasons change, if you guys have an area where, um, you can bring. Like shrubbery or, or so forth, and then they'll mulch it down. So you can take that back and use it or resource it.
We have a compost pile, which is, are you very, very familiar with town?
I'm still.
Okay. Second Street here, if you go all the way down.
Okay.
Turns into Gates Avenue. So if you just take the left at Gates, you can only go left. You'll see our Public Works Building. Behind that is the compost pile.
Off of Gates.
Exactly. And that's where you can drop off your stuff.
Okay, okay.
But they have an area to drop off your stuff. There's also some mulch back there, some compost stuff too that you're welcome to take.
Oh, okay. And then the other one is I was doing some research and with Kenyon, you don't allow hens or chickens in the yard, whereas other cities neighboring to here, they do. And, um, I would like to propose or to ask about. Being able to accomplish that and what information you would like. So far, I've gathered up from different cities in the area, but I just wanna make sure from what I'm observing that I have exactly what you would require.
Okay, so two things. One is, I'm sorry you came late, but the public comments at the beginning.
Oh, sorry.
So, um, but I would like you to call me and let's see if we can do something with this next month.
Okay.
Enter it into the record, or else have you come and talk under public comment, but I can. Kind of give you some of the history on chickens. And we've had other requests, the council has. Um, but, yeah, so that's what I'll tell you. So right now, we're sort of at the end of the meeting and we're not really supposed to. I mean, you know, it's, you're fine, but I'm just saying that it's not public comments at the beginning.
Okay.
And then what you would do is ask the council to put that on another agenda. So either we do that next month or we. Put it on, but I would probably say to come back March, the second Tuesday of March, September. And come at the beginning and then you can ask them then.
Okay. You can apologize.
No, it's fine. Not a problem at all.
Those are my questions with the.
Yeah, if you wanna give me a call tomorrow, Thursday, I can stop in right, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to town.
Okay, I don't have any comments either, so I think we need a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, and I will second. Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, I'm gonna second.
Okay, Doug, a second. Voting, Lee.
I.
Kim.
I.
Molly, I. Doug?
Doug? He's been in and out here.
We're good anyway.
Oh, can you vote, Doug?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, pass.